Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Thursday, March 24th. We are returning from executive session where we discussed the employment history of four particular employees, matters related to pending litigation, collective bargaining with the East Aurora Faculty Association, two particular students, and matters related to a particular corporation. Moving on to item three, are there any agenda changes? And no items requiring board action? Two more minutes.
Yep, so I just have a couple to share with you. I'd like to begin by congratulating our 4x800 boys indoor track team. They were the state champions, which is an incredible feat. Talking to Coach McLaughlin, he said that they brought their time luckily down from 2 minutes and 30 seconds to 2 minutes to win the state championship. I see a few in the audience today. We're going to celebrate with them. And then, so that qualifies them to go on to the national meet that is sponsored by New Balance, which is a huge, huge achievement. There, they came in pretty, correct me, was it fifth or ninth place?
Fifth.
Fifth, okay. So I got two different things. I got, okay, great. So fifth place is incredible. They finished All-American. That achievement is something that almost never happens. I mean, it's really incredibly, also have the section record for the 4x800. So just an incredible accomplishment from this group of young men, commitment to each other to make that happen. They gave up a lot of personal individual events to focus on the 4x800, and the results couldn't have been better. So we're really proud of them and happy for them in terms of that achievement, and we're going to celebrate with them at our next board meeting on April 6th. So I just want to say congratulations to them. It's really amazing. And then, I wanted to, I know some of the board members were able to make it. We had a really great, great wellness day this past Friday. We've been focusing on wellness for the last probably four or five years, and this year we decided to devote a whole day. In the past, we've done a half day, but this year we did a whole day. We started off with a really great inspirational speaker that talked about just, a lot of focus was on mental health and wellness, just all the stresses that we've been through over the past two years. The teachers and the support staff, the administrators, the board members, you know, were given a lot, and we need to take care of ourselves so that we can take care of our students. And so we had some really great activities planned throughout the day. Like I said, the keynote speaker, Mike Beany, Mike Beany was just fantastic in terms of his message to get us started. We were able to go outside. It was a beautiful day out, so we went on hikes. There was a 5K run by Mr. Lombardo, and timer on the track, and then, gosh, endless classes that the teachers and support staff could participate in. So I want to thank Ms. Lyons and Mr. Mambredi, and especially Mrs. Brown, who's our wellness coordinator, and she has got more enthusiasm and energy than anyone else. And everybody here, many of the administrators, Mrs. Mizano taught a class in macrame and was very well attended, so we appreciate that. And many of the other administrators ran sessions. Mr. Brown ran a three-on-three basketball tourney, so he enjoyed that as well. So there was a lot of great activities happening. So it was a really good day for everyone, and just grateful for everyone's participation and looking forward to doing it again next year. So, thank you again to Mrs. Brown, and she's really just done a fantastic job as a wellness coordinator. And I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Russ and Mr. Mambredi and the team for including the board in Wellness Day. It was great to get to participate, thank you for that. A quick thank you to Mrs. O'Weiler for coordinating tours at the Phelegic Research Services Center? Something, anyway, it was very cool, thank you for that. Policy committee met this past Monday. We made it through two policies, but Mr. Mambredi assures us that we will be cranking soon. It's going to go much more quickly from here. Policy committee members, please check your emails for Mr. Mambredi's latest. He's taken the edits and incorporated them, so we want to review and get back and keep this process moving along. Other board members, if you have any questions about the process at any time, please reach out to me, and we can funnel any requests if you may have them. We are seeing that as we review our standing policies, there are also new policies coming in from BOSIs that are not required but are recommended, so we're reviewing those in the mix as well. Thank you. And I would remind you all that we are in the process of working on our board self-evaluation. We have found the dates. Thank you all for your dedication and flexibility. We will be meeting at 7:30 in the morning on April 22nd to work on our board evaluation. Thank you. I will email you all. We just firmed that up as I was leaving. 22nd, April 22nd, Friday, April 22nd. I will email you all. And that's all I have. Thank you. Mrs. O'Weiler.
Thank you. I also attended the Wellness Day keynote speaker, keynote speaker, Mike Venney was incredible. His presentation was extremely powerful. It would be, he'd be a great speaker to have at the high school for our students to hear. He was so great. The multitude of classes that were offered, they were informative, they were fun, they were relevant, and it was just an absolutely great day. And there was a superhero theme. And just to give an idea of the classes I attended, Dash's Track Practice, Spider-Man's Balance, The Batcave, the Sanderson Sisters Spellbook, and Stretch Armstrong's Elasticity. So it was a really great, great day. So again, thanks to Jessica, to Mark, and to Lisa Brown for putting a great day on. On last Wednesday, I attended a webinar on developing district-wide and building-level emergency response plans, and I have all the packets if anyone would like to forward that information to you. And lastly was our capital facilities project held on last St. Patrick's Day. The work on the 21-22 capital outlay project at the middle school is going to be starting soon. We now officially have the SED approval. The plan is to hopefully have it all wrapped up and done by June 30th. The 22-23 project is going to be done at the high school. The phone will be upgraded, the sidewalk near the music entrance will be addressed, and they're also replacing some of the ceiling tiles. And hopefully, we'll know by April 1st if the budget for future capital outlay projects is going to be increased. As you all know, it's right now $100,000. The thought is it's going to go up to $250,000, and we'll know by April 1st. SED review time at this point is now up to 8 to 10, or 10 to 12 weeks, and they have agreed to no longer review third-party expedited reviews. If you remember, the last capital project, we paid for a third party to expedite it, and that SED had to review the review, so now they have agreed not to do that anymore, which hopefully will help speed it along. Yes. And our architect, Young Wright, provided information on three items that are being considered for the upcoming project. One is our middle school library. And just to give you a little background on this, in 1916, this was originally a school auditorium, and there was a balcony, there were two skylights, and the third floor was open with railings around it. And above this lovely ceiling, there is a lot of historic plaster. So the thought potentially is when we renovate this space, to potentially open that up, and that is just one of the things that we're thinking of. 1962, this was when this was changed to a music room, and cafeteria was added here. The next one that we talked about was the gym renovations in the middle school, the West Gym, and that was built in 1931. In 1954, a platform was added to provide more space. Our architects determined that the platform cannot be removed, we were hoping it could be, without major structural rebuilding. Therefore, that has been completely taken off of the list. There's still hope to make some improvements that are that area, like replacing the wall pads, lighting, ceiling, some painting the ceiling, painting the walls, et cetera. And the third thing that they provided research on was the roof eras. We were presented with diagrams showing the ages of all the roofs at each of our three buildings. Just to give you an idea, Parkdale has three main roof eras, middle school has four, and the high school has five different roof eras added. Our architects have organized the building condition survey on Excel, they're finalizing numbers, prioritizing items, and just to give you a partial priority list, middle school library, first floor hallways, fact room, bathrooms, and to finish the air conditioning and HVAC upgrades. At the high school, partial priority list is tennis courts, PA system, and parking lots. But that's just a partial list, and there's a lot more discussion that needs to be had.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Weiler. Mrs. Lyons?
Yes, the textbook committee met with the English, high school English department, and they're going to add four new support texts for their curriculum. We'd already agreed on other texts. These are support texts, and the books that they're going to be adding, two of them I'd read in book club, actually, were really good. The Underground Railroad by Colson Whitehead. By the way, he'll be at Babel the 24th. We have a board meeting, so I can't go, but if anybody wants to go to Babel. All the Light We Cannot See by Anthony Doer, another awesome book. That's, I should have backed up, Colson Whitehead is a fantasy trip of what the Underground Railroad looked like, but it's really, there's a lot of fantasy. He assumes that in the book, that the Underground Railroad was real, that there really was a railroad that went underground. So it's really kind of fascinating, his take on it, but really engaging at the same time. All the Light We Cannot See by Anthony Doer takes place in World War II, and it's a blind girl and her father and how they survive the war. The other two are supportive, all of these are supportive for 10 through 12, grades 10 through 12. The other two are really strong for the AP, preparing kids for the AP exams. A World of Ideas, cultural concepts that have shaped society. And the last one was Ideas and Argument, which I thought was phenomenal. I really enjoyed listening to how they're going to use this. It's a practice of answering for the AP questions, but it's also writing instruction in practice. And I'd love to see this applied all the way across, but right now, this is going to be for AP kids. But the thing that was good is that it gets into the fact, your AP exams ask you to defend your premise, and there's nothing we need more in this day and age than to learn how to evaluate and defend evidence. And I think they're going to be very valuable to our kids in their critical thinking, so we were thrilled with all three, all four of these.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Mr. Cassidy?
So, Monday afternoon, Mrs. Danu and I attended the Athletic Advisory Committee meeting, and it was, so Mr. Casselny hosted that, and we started off by just reviewing what it's meant to do, and that it's meant to promote and evaluate interscholastic sports in our district, and then provide recommendations to the school board based on the information that we gather. We got an update on COVID, and that, you know, things are, you know, fortunately returning to normal for the spring sports. He reviewed with us at the different, in the different seasons, the different sports that are offered, and at what level they're offered, whether it be varsity, JV, modified, or the 7, 8, 9. And then, we also went through the participation rates. He provided us some data going back a few years on participation rates, and we talked about the ones that are seeing an increase and the others that are seeing a decrease. We went through and talked about the, you know, what the attendees, the members of the committee, might like to see with regards to capital projects that we might want to include in the capital project. And I should say, it included the high school administration, it was the Board of Education, there were coaches at every level, there was the town parks and rec department was represented, as was the Boys and Girls Club, and some parents who are actively involved in different sports. So it was a nice, it was a nice representation. And so we went through all of that, and then, what we did as a takeaway was to say that we would meet again in May and come back with thoughts on those, on those various topics that we talked about, and try to present to the board a list of recommendations based on what we know is being discussed and is being needed and desired throughout the district.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Yeah. Thank you, yes. There, on March 16th, Ms. Danu and Mr. Flowers and I met with the Finance Committee to talk about the budget and the budget process, and I won't go into too many details because that's the main item on the agenda tonight. But we did spend a little time talking about the cap, the Repair Reserve Resolution, which is on the agenda for action later in the evening, and of course, we recommend that it be approved. The Federal Reserve stimulus funds, we spent a little bit of time talking about those. Most of our discussion revolved around zero-based budgeting, which Joanne helped us to understand what the heck that is. And basically, what it means is that you start from scratch each year, and you don't just add on to what you had budgeted the previous year, but you analyze each line to make sure that what you're asking for is what you really need for that year. So that's the way this budget was built, that you'll be hearing about a little later. We also talked about budget variances, which are the excesses in revenues or the excesses in appropriations that are put to use at the end of the year for funding reserves or to be applied to the appropriated fund balance to help reduce taxes in the following year, and we discussed some various options relating to that. This, all this stuff is behind the tab that says Finance Committee in your folder, and there are a number of handouts that you might want to look at. One relates to the BOSIs budget, another relates to current issues regarding revenues, third, handout relating to the teacher's retirement system, and another relating to three-year budget scenario and the COVID relief fund. So the, I'm going to end it here simply because the details will be discussed a little later this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. And thank you again, Budget and Finance Committee, for the notes there, so helpful and informative.
Really.
Danny?
No, going last, everyone's covered everything.
Excellent. Thank you for participating in all the things you didn't have to cover.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on to Administrator comments. Any administrators? Mr. Brown?
First, I'd like to thank all of the East Aurora Middle School alumni for being here this morning. I was just going to see that. Two brief comments. First of all, we had our middle school talent show last night, and it was just so nice to see students back up on stage. We had a great lively audience. 14 students participated in it, from comedians to rappers to singers to gymnastics, and then some were even virtual. We had that component, so three of the students performed talents that they couldn't do on stage, such as drawing, cooking, things like that, so it was phenomenal. So thank you to those students, and just, in a way, it's the best day of the year because it makes you just realize how great our students are, and in a way, it's bad because it makes me realize that all the students were more talented than I. So that's a little bit humbling, but special thank you to Mr. Turdew and Ms. Garris, who are the advisors of the Talent Show/Drum Club, so they do an exceptional job. The other thing, I'd just like to thank our PTO. We met this week, and we have a lot of really exciting things that are going to be happening throughout this school year. We have activity nights for all the students, and a lot of really cool things that our eighth graders are going to experience, and we're in the midst right now of getting feedback from our eighth graders on some of the special activities that they would like to participate in, so we will have those details figured out in the next month or so, and I look forward to sharing those with them. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Anyone else? Yeah, Mrs. Pantoja. Oh, you're outside, just below. Anybody else? Thank you all for being here. I neglected to comment, but thank you for having us all back home in the library.
I will comment on one thing that happened to me yesterday at Parkdale. When I went to visit, Mr. Wallace, who's one of our fourth grade teachers, had his students write on a, did some research and write on an animal. And so they were all researching different animals, and then they had to create a, using their Chromebooks, a presentation that they would share with the other students in the school throughout the day. And so, this one boy that I went to see, he started talking about this Arctic fox, and it's this really cute, small little fox, and he's talking about, it's an omnivore, and he's explaining it to this young lady who's in kindergarten. So she's sitting at the table, and I'm sitting with him, and he's taking her through his research and presentation, and it was really awesome. And this young man, who's in fourth grade, has this great sense of humor, so he's interjecting all these kind of one-liners throughout his thing. And so Bianca wasn't quite getting it, and she's like this, she was like nodding her head, but I was cracking up. And so then, in the end, he was talking about himself, the author, because they have to go through all of these processes in the writing, in the writing process, all these pieces in the writing process, and so he was explaining all the different things that he had done, and then it talks about the author, and he's saying that, how much he enjoys writing, and that he and his two buddies have started writing like graphic novel comic books based on the fact of the author visit that he attended in school like two or three weeks earlier. And so I didn't get, I didn't have the chance to share this with Mrs. Pantoja, but when I came over to meet with them, I just thought to myself, how incredible for that young man to connect with his two buddies and to start writing on his own. I just, it was just fantastic.
You just never know where inspiration is going to come from.
So thank you for making that happen, and thank you for Mr. Wallace, you know, for him putting that all together, because it was, it was a lot of work for the kids to go through the process, and then to prepare presentations and share with their peers. It's just perfect.
We have a lot of excitement around what writing and sharing, all their studies, etc., and it's just been marvelous. Our kindergartners are doing how-to books, explaining how to dance, and it's a wonderful celebration.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, fantastic, yeah. It was really great.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Great. No one else? Okay. We are on item eight. This is community comments. We ask anyone who is interested in speaking to the board this evening to please fill out a comment card. We have those. We ask speakers to limit their time to three minutes. Our total time is a maximum of 30 minutes. We do offer everyone always the opportunity to reach the board at BOE@EAK12.org at any point. We do appreciate reading letters in advance. It's a nice opportunity for us to hear from folks. And we did hear from Mrs. McAdie, while I received an email from Mrs. McAdie, correct? Okay. Mrs. Hornet?
Thank you. So I guess, being that we have students, I'm just, if I could take just a quick minute to explain a term and make sure that they understand because they're here to learn, right?
Sure.
So you've got to know what ESSER means, the acronym ESSER. Okay, it's the funding received from the federal government, one of the provisions was that you could mask in school, but it's the funding that was received. It refers to elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. Okay, so you learned something. I'll continue on. So it's otherwise known as the ESSER funds, and my question is, is why haven't these ESSER funds been prioritized on non-recurring expenses as required by law? The majority of your slated ESSER funding is slated for recurring expenses such as UPK, transportation, and additional staffing. This kind of also continues on with my last inquiry, the last board meeting, is what happens when these ESSER funds run out? So I guess, two things right there, just, you know, wondering about that. You have committed to these recurring funds while the district lost another 6.5% of its students as of late. Perhaps, and I believe it was Mr. Cassidy, I'm not sure, it might have been Ms. O'Weiler, spoke about the HVAC upgrading. So that's good to hear, because Mr. Russ and I had spoke about that back in mid-August, that that was in his five-year plan. But many of us taxpayers had, including myself, had sent via email. Mine went out on September 28th, a 36-number questionnaire regarding situations regarding to the HVAC systems and upgrading purification, air purification and ventilation. I have not received anything back from the board or Mr. Russ yet on that, so I would appreciate, you know, you ask us to write in to BOE@EAK12.org, and I often receive from this, I'm not sure how to say her name.
Waffer Earth.
Thank you, Ms. Waffer Earth. I always receive, you know, she says that it's been received and passed on to y'all, so it would be nice to, in fact, to receive that. And also, it's been my understanding that there's a volunteer in the district who has expertise in this, and he's volunteered to review all the systems in the three schools, and he has not yet been contacted, so that would probably be nice. The other thing I was talking about is, I was happy to see that the unassigned fund balance for June 2021 was kept under the 4% cap unlike the June 2020, which was 8.68% to the tune of 3.3 million. Regarding that, I'm sure that with the state of our economy, things double at the pump, 40% raise in gas and electric and food, et cetera, that you'll be extra attentive to crunching the numbers for the budget and making our tax dollars stretch as far as they can while keeping our students as a priority. It's, you know, I'm a number cruncher myself, and it's tough these days, but we trust that, you know, during this budget process that you'll do a good job at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hornet. Please do stay tuned for the budget conversation. We do continue to talk about those one-time funds coming in and grants from the federal government, and we've been talking about that throughout the entire process, we'll keep that up. I apologize if there's been any misunderstanding about the emails to the board. The board is slow and deliberative. We don't engage in direct Q&amp;A wherever possible. We do direct folks to individual administrators who can answer the questions. We take the comments and the information that comes in as points of information where areas of concern are in the community. We cannot respond to everything individually, but we do take all of the information, and so we thank you for that. Okay, we have Colin Schumaker. Mr. Schumaker here? Nope, okay, Denise Cole?
Good morning. In the March 3rd issue of the East Aurora Advertiser, there's a letter to the editor that was published in the Reader's Opinion section, which was signed by Mr. Russ and each member of the entire board. The letter did, of course, cite some facts, but was impacted originally. For instance, regarding the appeal to the State Education Commissioner, your letter states it contains gross misstatements of fact and includes statements that we believe are defamatory, disingenuous, and malicious. I would like to, the gross misstatement of facts, that's going to come out in the commissioner's decision. We'll see how that all pans out. But as for the appeal containing defamatory, disingenuous, and malicious statements, you know, just throwing that out there to the public in the local reg is kind of defamatory against the citizens that felt it was necessary to file such an appeal. Every allegation in the appeal is backed, was backed up by specific instances where law, regulation, or your own policies were broken. This is essentially about job performance. It's not personal, and it certainly wasn't malicious. The next statement, quote from that article, from that opinion piece, is, "These various actions have been commenced by a small group of community members who seem to disagree with mandates related to masking and testing requirements. This statement is extremely misleading. It should be clear to all of you by now that the East Aurora Guardian is focused on transparency and accountability. We saw a partnership with you," again, and I've talked about this before, but I, in my three minutes, I think it's worth talking about again. "We saw a partnership with you in the meeting that took place, at our request, where we provided you with a memo with five possible actions, action items to bridge the divide and the communication breakdown between the board and the administration and members of the community, who had presented thoughtful questions regarding the issue, the biggest issue at hand in all of our legs at that time, which was COVID mitigation. And we were pretty much ignored. There was agreement that, that was a good meeting. We were making some progress there, and there was agreement that the board would review and discuss and vote on the items in the memo, which, as we know, was never done." I had, I did have a discussion with Mr. Russ at one point where...
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. Can you wrap up, please, your time?
Where I believe he insinuated that the reason that the discussion about our memo was stopped was because you received a Freedom of Information Law request from our attorney. It's a Freedom of Information Law request.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole.
It's, this is government transparency.
Thank you.
And after that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole.
Hired a private investigator to.
Thank you, Mrs. Cole. Okay, thank you. You were at time. Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Cole, typically I wouldn't respond, but I will at this time. Um, what I would say is that in our conversations in October, when you're represented by an attorney, it's not sending a message that you're looking for open and transparent conversation with, with, with the board or the district. So when an attorney is representing you, you did not speak about that when we met on, in October, and two weeks later, which you must add, the relationship already set up, he's already filing things on your behalf. So I explained, once you engage with the attorney, we have no choice but then to step back and turn it over to our attorneys as well. So those were your actions, not ours, that caused us to, to, to move in that direction. So while you say you want to be transparent, it is very apparent to me that that really isn't the case.
I just agree.
Thank you very much. We're not, we're not going to have dialogue. I'd, I'd ask that you and the superintendent have a conversation separately. We're going to move on with the meeting now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Russ. Moving on to reports and discussion items, we are on item nine. The proposed 22 and 2023 school year calendar.
Okay. I'm just gonna kind of start in September and we'll go down the columns and find out some highlights. Um, like we usually do, we look at the BOSIS calendar, and that's how we get our week-long breaks and decide where they are in the calendar. Um, starting in September, traditionally, we have one staff development day and two faculty professional days before the students come back, before their first day of school. So the staff development day on the first, the two faculty professional days, and then students will start school on Wednesday, September 7th. Um, moving on, we have a couple of staff development days in October, November. We like to attach those to, um, for October, it's the long weekend, and for November, it's Thanksgiving break, gives families a chance if they want to get away, the kids will not have school. Um, November, December 2nd, um, if you notice that, the triangle, it's a new shape on our district calendar. The, um, in the past, so let the first Friday of December, we've had, um, a staff development day. And on that staff development day, K-8 have had parent-teacher conferences, and 912 have gotten professional development, staff development. Um, and the K-8 teachers have always thought they were shorted a little bit. They like that time to get to have professional development, staff development, work together, but they always have conferences. So, um, we changed up this year, and we moved that staff development day. And that day now, K-8 will have conferences, and the students will not have school, but the 912, the students will still have school that day. That's how a lot of local districts do it, when there's a full day for conferences. A lot of high schools don't dedicate a full day to conferences just because not as many parents come. Um, so like, students in the high school have school, and K-8 will have their conferences on the second. Um, moving on to the, the winter, the, um, the holiday break, we have off the Friday, the 23rd, uh, and January, the 2nd, for the legal holidays, returning on the 3rd. Uh, we have Regents Week in there, the first day of the second semester, as it always traditionally is, is the, um, end of January, or the 30th. Um, February break is the same week, it always coincides with President's Day. Um, March 17th, another staff development day. The, um, April break is the week prior to Easter, uh, as it is this year too, that aligns with the BOSIS calendar. Um, Memorial Day holiday is 29th, and June 19th is the Juneteenth holiday. And we'll have a staff development day on June 26th. And, um, before I talk about that day, I should mention, we have a, a calendar committee. So, um, this calendar goes back and forth between the administrators and myself, and then to the calendar committee, which is, um, Mrs. Converse and a teacher from middle school and a teacher from the high school. So we all met and decided on a couple of these dates. There's, it's not really too flexible with the, um, the dates you have to be in session and the holidays in there. Um, but we decided to add in June 26th as a staff development day to reach that 188 faculty days. Um, and then the teachers will have an opportunity to, uh, do staff development after their, after hours during the school year next year to not have to come in that day. So if they do come in, we'll provide, uh, staff development day, but it's also an incentive to do something after school hours, uh, so they don't have to come in that day during the school year.
Thank you. Any board members have a question? Mrs. Daniel?
I see that graduation is going to be on a Saturday, or is that going to be the going forward from now and it's just going to continue on Saturdays? Well, Mr. Robert.
It appears that graduation will begin to be outside. So.
Oh, yes. I pleased them.
So that gives us a little wiggle room, depending on the weather, that if Saturday's good weather, we'll go with it, but Sunday's a bad couple. And there's a push by Mr. Russ, have it on a Friday night too, so we're.
With fireworks, right, Mr. Russ?
And I think what we talked about.
That'd be cool.
Because Saturday is nice for people that have family traveling, because it's always been on that Sunday, but not everyone is local. So I think that's, yeah. So it's obviously a positive response. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just had a comment. Um, this year, Easter is on a Sunday, and we have off on that Monday. I noticed next year, Easter's on the Sunday as usual, and we do not have off on that Monday.
Right, so when we sat down, uh, we had like one day to play with, I think, a wiggle room of where to put that extra, a day, the teachers, the teachers had to work today. Anyway, that, that was a day that we were playing with and moving around, but it didn't make the cut. We have to take it somewhere else over. We take away from somewhere else, I guess.
My, my concern is concerned that, because then people have to travel on Easter on that Sunday, so we, chances are we'll have kids missing school on Monday.
That's pretty typical.
So the break is the week before.
Yes.
Yeah, so yeah, the break lines up with the BOSIS calendar, so this year, we have off on Monday.
And it's gone back and forth. Like, it depends, sometimes Easter's before, in the beginning, and then, then it's fine, it's easier. And then sometimes it's at the end, yeah, probably half and half maybe. And, and then sometimes we've had the Monday off, and sometimes we haven't. Again, it just depends on how the calendar falls, and sometimes it's when the school year starts, you know, and so this beginning part has a lot to do with it, uh, because we always start September 1st, right? Yeah, so it depends, so like, yeah, like, so the kids are coming back on the 7th, that's kind of late. Right, yeah.
And so like December 23rd, we could have moved to April 10th, or January 2nd, we could have moved to April 10th. But we thought those, I think, kept it to the take, I guess.
Yeah.
Balance. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the school district budget. George, Mr. Russ?
Oh, sorry? Did I agree?
Okay, so, so what happened was Joanne did her presentation last month, or two weeks ago, but because it was just two weeks after the last budget launch. Appropriated fund balance, unappropriated fund balance. All right. So what happened was because there was only two weeks between the last two board meetings, it was worth updating the grid, so if I jump in now, and that'll lead into this, so you should all have the grid in front of you. Um, again, even though it's, it's been, uh, two weeks since our last meeting, but four weeks from the last grid, not a lot of changes. The changes that do exist tend to work in our favor, um, but you'll see how we're tuning this in. So salaries continue to trend under budget. Remember, the top section, negatives are good things, so salaries are good. Benefits you're going to see are slightly higher than budgeted for the last couple of years as we move to our new healthcare model. We realize some unanticipated savings. Uh, Ms. George has now kind of dialed in that number pretty exactly. And what this is, some of the folks we've hired with the COVID funds, the healthcare still comes out of the general budget, so you'll see, we're well within, um, in perspective of a $40 million budget, $50,000, still a big amount, but relationally, is a pretty darn close number. Um, so that's where that is, and we don't really anticipate any changes on that through the end of the year, other than possibly a person moving from single to family or that, but it will be minor, okay? Uh, equipment, we're still just kind of holding our own on that. That doesn't mean there weren't savings, it just means we're not comfortable pushing those savings onto all of you yet. Supplies, we're doing a very good job holding our own and showing that we're going under budget there. Contractual, you're going to see that we are, um, still over budget, but a lot less over budget than we were two months ago. So you'll remember in the January column, the 200,000 there was more or less offset by the 250 right below it. Well, the good news is both of those columns are beginning to trend in a, both, both of them in a good way. We're seeing more and more savings in terms of contractual, um, which are stuff that we can control. The initial flip-flop was the bringing of BOSIS services in-house, and that's where that 200 and that 250 kind of offset. Now it's the stuff that we have more control over. So 750 over budget, but again, we're down from 200 over budget, and that's due to decisions that, uh, Mr. Russ and the administrators made. Uh, we see that textbook, software, library, that's just a tiny bit under budget, that's great. Um, the BOSIS continues to trend, and a lot of those savings, so we're about $325,000 under budget to BOSIS. A lot of those are savings that are continuing to materialize because of the bringing on of the 811 class here. So initially, I told you there was that 200, 250. It's actually showing that we're 75 to the bad, but 325 to the good. So that was a really good decision budgetarily, and even better, it was a good decision to bring our kids back into our building on our campus taught by our teachers.
We, we toured them when we did the visitation, and they were such an adorable group of kids and absolutely happy as could be, weren't they? They were just so cute. Wanted to give us hugs.
And that's the part that goes beyond the numbers that I'm presenting, so thank you for sharing that. So in terms of expenses, uh, you'll see that we are $351,000 under budget, uh, and that's decisions that the administration has made through the year. On the other end, uh, the next L column, positives are good, negatives are bad. So you're going to see the final number for property tax came in about $31,000 stronger than expected, stayed at 30,000. You're going to see a $100,000 jump from 150 to 250 for Erie County. We just got our latest payment, and that is trending extremely strong. So we have that number. You're going to see that we are under budget for other revenue, that is, um, BOSIS rebates from last year, and we just used a lot less BOSIS last year because of COVID and the model that we were running. So we are under budget, I'm sorry, oh, under expenditures. Under revenues, thank you, I knew there was a word there. But as you shake out all the revenues, you're going to see that we're 161 to the good. So in terms of expenditure, we're 351 to the good. In terms of revenues, we are 161 to the good. You're going to see over the last three months, from January, February to March, we went from 297 to the good to 397 to 512 to the good. That sounds really exciting, but part you have to remember is way down in this column over here, 418 of that is already earmarked for next year's budget. So we've actually broken even in terms of this, and we're $94,000 to the good. So I know there's been a lot of numbers thrown out there. If you look at that, and I'm not the best at numbers, but it means we're about $94,000 to the good once all our bills are paid, if we end school year this year, which means that we are 0.25% uh, under, over, under budget, um, which is really good. And if you read over the Buffalo News, she won't say it, but I will, you're going to see three local districts got cited for major fiscal malfeasance or lack of oversight to budget a $40 million budget within $94,000, nine twelfths of the month through the, of the year. Remember, we're in month nine of our fiscal year. Um, you know, we're, we're down to under $100,000 variance between the budget and what we're sending, spending, and saving. Um, I did say the last couple of years, you know, we were able to kind of find some one-time revenue sources or one-time expenditures. I said you can't count on it, we kept pulling different rabbits from the hat. We're pretty much out of rabbits now, and we really worked very hard to dial in a very, very authentic budget here. COVID obviously threw a little bit of a curveball in that, but again, we're nine twelfths through the school year, and we're within a quarter of a percent of, um, the budget to the good. Uh, the numbers on hiring and the rest, those have remained the same, the numbers on, um, fund balances and, uh, they were not stated. I'm losing them today.
Reserves?
Reserves. Sorry. Long. Thank you. So that's your sheet, and that's your update. You'll get another update, um, at the second April meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So sorry.
To remember, uh, now last year when we were doing this same chart, uh, when we got to June, we really didn't get a report, uh, and we waited, and, and of course, you were waiting for the auditors.
Correct.
To do their thing, and then we received a report.
Right.
In the fall.
Right.
That related to this, and there were significant variances. So, so the, 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 the lines, many of these lines changed significantly between May and June. Do you anticipate that happening again this year? Or are we, can we somehow or another over the next April and May get closer to an accurate rate?
Yes, to your second question. The number we, Joanna and I have worked, I look at it, I have her explain it to me, like I don't understand it, mostly because I don't understand it, and I ask good questions. And through that process, I think we both found it beneficial to really dial in what is realistic and digestible in terms of an educational program versus a financial program. Last year, those areas that were way out of whack, um, each one was for a specific reason, that's not an excuse. Last year was such an anomaly, we didn't know what models we were running, we didn't know transportation, all the rest of that. Um, the fact is, if I would bet, I comment, if you look back at where we were last year, that number was now within a quarter percent of the budget. We were still kind of more open place. We have a very robust conversation multiple times through the month, and then the day of the board meeting, so today we have a working lunch where we really kind of beat up this number. Um, we're not expecting major swings, um, major swings to the bad or to the good, um, but I will say that we do send this as a realistic but conservative number. We only put numbers on here once we think it's there. So it's, in theory, will, it will be slightly better than this, but we're not expecting the huge waves that you saw, um, last year.
Yeah, and it makes a lot of sense. We wouldn't want you to cut it too whole, so it should be conservative, and we should do a little better than what we're expecting here.
That is.
So that's, that's great. All I would ask is that as you do the April and the May chart here, that, uh, that if some new information becomes available, that it be folded into this so that it doesn't come as a surprise to us in September or October when we get the auditors.
That's fine. If there is a surprise, it'll, we believe it'll be a small surprise and only to the good.
Yeah, and if, if we find out about it in June or July, tell us then, rather than waiting till September, October.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other board members with questions, comments?
I, I was just going to say once again, thank you so much for doing this, because this is so incredibly helpful for us as we go through this and have this information.
On that, but the one thing that I know is of public concern, uh, the COVID funds received and spent, I skipped over that by mistake. So we have not received any more COVID funds in the last four weeks, we're still at 481,000. Uh, we spent a bit more, so we've spent 290 of the 481, um, but we're holding our own and only have, we've only received two payments so far, two, two, 337, and then that number got brought up to 41. It was not a payment of 41, it's whatever the difference is, and we've not received any other, um, checks from, but yeah. So just so you're aware of that.
Thank you. District budgets? All right. Moving on to item eight.
So just, um, looking at, uh, just our agenda, you know, we're going to go through basically the same thing that we have over the last several, several weeks and months in terms of budget development, um, so.
I'm just going to get behind this.
That's all. Um, so here's our agenda, and I'll go through, back through each of the elements, and I'm going to give you the details, and then we'll open it up for questions at the end. So we'll start off with first things first, and it's hard to make decisions when, when you know what your values are. So it's not hard to make decisions, you know, we keep our values, like we said, in, in the forefront of what we've done, we've worked on this for several years, uh, and it's really been a really, um, good guiding force for us, you know, it keeps us focused, kind of brings us back. You always ask the question, is this what's in the best interest for our students? Is it following our values and the vision for that particular year? So what are our commitments again, or to the interests of our students is first and foremost, uh, we're committed to our community and using good care and judgment and managing our resources. Uh, we want to do things in an open way so that the community is well informed, uh, and we're committed to constant improvement, and that's one of our values, continuous improvement. So, uh, that's, uh, in regards to the budget process as well. So we always, Budget Finance Committee has been really helpful in terms of kind of helping us to focus and have dialogue throughout the year as we prepare for the budget, especially you know, over the last, gosh, maybe 10 years, between the GEA and the COVID stuff, it's been a crazy time for us, right? So, you know, this Budget Finance Committee is really helpful, and that's where we generated this chart from. I know the board finds it really helpful, because it kind of just puts it right in front[1778.25] of you, right? It's through all the nonsense, all the, all the crazy details, and it kind of puts it right. So you can see we have, we have full schedules as we meet. Mr. George does a great job coordinating this, and again, getting those minutes out to the board so you know what we're talking about. And so we meet pretty frequently throughout the year. We start right off in the fall, just kind of getting preliminary information on the table. We are through January, February, here we are now getting closer to budget season. We just had a meeting on the 16th, and, and, and there Joanna explained zero-based budgeting to the committee. And again, it's tightening up, we're getting a lot closer to the final numbers, and we have another meeting on March 38th for our preparation for our meeting on April 6th. Here it is again, trying to balance all of this stuff, it's always a challenge, but it's also kind of exciting. You know, we've got a lot of great ideas, new textbooks, those types of things. So we got to find how do we establish and adjust those goals and visions on an annual basis? We identify what are our primary priorities, and then balance and trade-offs. So that's kind of a continuous loop, you know, that we worked on throughout the process. And now, like I said, it's getting much tighter, and we're getting closer to a, a, a final version. So the federal stimulus, Ms. Horning had some questions about this. We've got a little over $3.1 million that'll be coming to us over the next three and a half years through July and August of 2024. So, so what we needed to do when we first started this out is like they, they had us respond within a matter of weeks. Okay, we're going to give you all this money, tell us how you're going to spend it. And then they said, don't worry about it, you can amend it. So we had to put something together in terms of what do we think's going to happen over the next three and a half years, you know how the government works, right? So it was, it was, it was kind of challenging, but we did it, and we put it forward, and it was accepted. So now we're in the process of kind of reevaluating it and, and making adjustments. So they'll file amendments, but the amendment process is extremely challenging, and so it takes a lot of detail. Like they said, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a big deal, it actually is. So yeah, it's, it's, the process is changing over time. But again, like the idea of is finding the balance between how do we support, because the federal stimulus is to support like learning loss, mental health, those types of things within the district. How do we use this money for one-time expenses? Because this is one-time money that will come into us over a period. And then how do we balance it against some of the positions like the social workers and behavioral specialists, those things that we really need that are helping our kids out? You know, how do we balance that and then work those costs into the budget without too much impact on the tax level? So there's that, that delicate balance that, that Mr. George is working on.
Yep, I can help with one of these that we can go to the UPK transportation, because I know that that was brought up today. When we had to build this last summer, we didn't know what UPK transportation was going to look like, and we had gotten the UPK grant that was due at the same time also. So we put it in as a placeholder in case. But what we have found, this is one of the areas that we will definitely be amending, because there really isn't much cost for the UPK transportation because of the way first student worked with us and how Mr. Lyroft did a great job helping organize that transportation, where the students come here and catch a shuttle bus to EACA, very little cost. So therefore, this is one of those areas that we will be amending, and we'll be looking for those one-time purchases.
And we talked about UPK last time, that we're actually going to be taking the two sections are kind of coming back to us. We work with EACN, they just couldn't make the numbers work for them on their end, so we're taking the two classes back so they'll all be on our campus. So that's kind of exciting, we're finding space. Mrs. Benzo is working hard to find two new spaces for them to come. And then there's also some discussion at the state level that there's going to be significant more funding for, for UPK, so we might have an expansion grant. Then we would have to look at things differently because we are running out of space.
How did, how did we do with the enroll, with the registration compared to the number of spaces available?
Yeah.
So this year, we haven't held the lottery yet just because of the changes in the program. As Mr. Russ mentioned, we're going to press us back and try to find space, and want to make sure that before we start the lottery and enroll with students. But for families that have enrolled, I believe we were between 80 and 90, I don't have an exact number, and then we still have the 50, if everything falls into place, we're bringing the classes back, three classes, so 54 students. So we have quite a bit more this year that have enrolled than UPK or that have put into the lottery, we should say.
Because this last year, we hit 54 right on the numbers.
I know, it worked out perfectly last year.
And a few people pulled out, so we had 54. So it worked out perfectly, but now we have almost.
Well, I think the words out that this is a good progress.
Well, we had two classes, we're going to have three now?
Well, we had one here and two at EACN.
Oh, we had three already?
Yeah, we had three already, so we're just going to have three on our campus.
Okay, that's wonderful.
So the total number of students is going to be 54. So we'll have 80, or you have 80 or 90 people, somewhere in that, potentially more, but it's going to be a lottery, so whoever, so some of those.
Generator, and it just selects the names.
Do we have the rooms lined up?
Yes, that's, that's what we're.
UPK grant would be allow more students?
That would probably be a challenge for us for next year to find the space. So we would, we'd have to think about if they say, for instance, like, so now we, we have funding, so other school districts are funded differently depending on their needs. But so for us, because it's, it's new for us, and this is the first time ever we qualified for funding, but now it's really, they're really pushing towards a universal pre-K for all kids, like in all school districts. That's really the ultimate goal, I don't know if they'll get there, because there's a lot of money involved. But it looks like it's going to expand, so I would assume they're going to expand like before, we would expand the four-year-old offerings before they go down to three-year-olds, something like that, we don't know. But it's finding the space. So if eventually we come to all three and four-year-olds, and say we have five classes, we'd have 10 classes of pre-K, we would have to find another.
Yeah.
Means to support that, so that's down the road.
But you think we have adequate rooms to do the three?
Yes. Yes, yeah, they're working, they'll, they'll make it work, yes.
It's a work in progress.
Yes. Because you know, we, yeah, there's just, just managing the people that are using some spaces, or we have most of these classrooms and things like that, so we want to kind of keep all that as much as we can intact. We may have to make some adjustments there, and so we'll know that shortly. Probably for the next meeting I can tell you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so the federal stimulus dollars is that kind of, again, a work in progress. You can see we've got, we haven't received a whole lot of money yet, so we're still waiting on a majority of the money to come to us. We haven't spent a whole lot either, so that's a good thing. So this has been a work in progress, and again, working through the, the federal process and mandates, it's, it's a challenge. So, but it's good, I mean, it's great for pre-K and, and all of this stuff. I mean, it's wonderful to have this money to do a lot of good things for our kids. So the reserve funds again, you know, we, we go back to 14, like when our reserves were our healthiest, and that was kind of our goal to get back to that point of 4.7 million, almost 4.8 million. You can see as we went through those transitions with the GEA, it went down to $2 million, which was really, really slim in terms of our reserves. So we've worked really hard over the last four years, three to four years to rebuild that. So you can see right now we're at about 3.9, almost 4 million, getting closer to that 4.8 million dollar goal. I guess the ones we'd like to, if, if there are excess revenues or under expenditure appropriations, we'll, we'll want to look at like the technology reserve, repair reserve, and maybe most importantly, it's the capital reserve in terms of funding the new capital project that we're talking about for, for, for December. So that's probably where we, we'd like to put our focus. But of course, we'll have a discussion about that before, you know, any of the money is moved, what they determine what's locked in. But this, again, we're in a much better spot, so it feels good, we have some, some resources to rely on if things do turn in a bad direction. Okay, governors, date, age runs, and you know, really hopeful, you can see the dates back all the way to January 18th, so a lot of things have changed over that, this period of time. And the one good thing is that they, they've been really great about hitting the, of April 1st deadline, and so really hopeful, and there's been some really good dialogue between the Assembly, the Senate, and the Governor. Things seem to be moving on really nicely, so I'm, I'm very hopeful we will have a, a budget on April 1st, and so that really helps us in terms of our planning. Then we'll really know all of these numbers, and you can see like the foundation aid has been really, it's 1.1 million, and that's really important for us because that's aid that we can count on every year, and, and they're committed to continuing to fund that, that, that source for next year as well. Again, so that's really important to us because we are one of the school districts that got hurt the most when we went into the GEA because of the foundation being closed. So you can see though, you can see some other areas where we had less aid, as Mark was kind of explaining in his presentation, because we use less service, we're receiving less aid then, right? So we spent a lot less, but that means we get less aid there. And so that's what those two categories of high-cost excess aid and BOSI's aid kind of represent, and we're, we're thinking that that's going to kind of normalize, although we will see some BOSI savings because of some of the programming changes that they've made, in particular that 811 classroom, which is just absolutely fantastic, and Steal Bolt is a phenomenal teacher. So, so wonderful, you know, and, and so it's really, really great for our, our kids, but it also is good for our budget. So then you can see some small minor adjustments in hardware and software. Again, transportation aid, and we worked with First Student when transportation was cut over the last, like we're going back to 20, you know, we cut back on transportation, and all of those aid categories start rolling forward. So we use less, we spent less on transportation, so we get less aid back, but ultimately, that's good for us. But we had to work with First Student because, you know, they still had to pay their employees, so we had to work out some kind of compromise, which worked out exactly, actually worked out very well, and Mr. George again took care of that with First Student. So here it is, just, we're going to go through on like the historical kind of long-range planning, and we always kind of look three-years-ish, you know, and, and what, what do we need, and when do, when do those things kind of happen? So if you can see here, we're just starting out Parkdale, and there's a bunch of priorities that we've had on the list over time, and you can see a lot of those first things in the thing have been taken care of. So, you know, we, the big one here was the 3.0 FTE K to four teachers. We wanted to create six sections of, at each grade level to maintain stability, and then also most importantly, reduce class size. So we've done that, and it's been really successful, and that's, it's been, it's been very positive. And so we, we accomplished that in the 2021 school year, so that kind of comes off the priorities.
Brian, I was just going to say for a suggestion for when we post this on the website, we might want to explain what the X's mean, because it took me a while. I mean, we've been going through it, so I understand obviously what they mean, but if someone's just looking at this, they're going to wonder, oh, why does it matter this year and not the other year? So you, you might want to do some way of, because people aren't going to look at that on the website, because it looks like when you say it's not a priority anymore, people will think, well, is it not a priority because we don't meet? Exactly, that's what I'm saying, so we want to put that down as not a priority.
So, so maybe a check mark would be, you know, I don't know, a minus and a check mark might be.
Yeah, just some way, do you know what I'm saying, just to make it clearer?
I actually went back to every single budget presentation from the day that I started, because we started a rolling long-range plan when I started, and it was very hard to try to summarize it. And I think the important thing to think about on these slides is that it's a long-range plan. Just because it's listed in one year doesn't mean that it was fulfilled in that year. It was a long range, and it could have taken two years, as we see on the, I think it was actually three years because we cut a year off.
Right.
To fulfill that goal.
Yes.
And so maybe just a key that says, you know, the key, X means this has been accomplished, it says then.
We mean a priority, Y means it was accomplished, or something like that, or a check the year was accomplished, maybe I could add a check mark.
That would be a quick word in there. Accomplished means accomplished and check mark. Right, just so, because people are going to look at this to, to see, and I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
I had the same issue for reading this, I mean.
But initially.
So we were like trying to say, how do I explain it?
How do we explain it? It was explained differently every year that we did it, so.
And you can see sometimes it's, it's a priority, then it is accomplished, and then it becomes a priority again, because our technology has gone up, and then up even more. So that continues to come on and off of priorities.
So you need X equals, not X marks the spot.
Right, exactly, so I'll, I'll work on that.
Thank you, I know, I know this was a request so that we could keep track of all these things and continue to communicate with people, and it's a moving target. We know some, some community members have been with us since the beginning, and they want to see where those things are happening, and others are brand new, and they need to understand what we're talking about from six years ago.
Here's a good example, the STEAM coordinator's been on our list since 1920, maybe even before that, probably 1920 is probably when it started, and it continues to be on the list of priorities.
2020?
Nineteen, what did I say?
1920. But I think it continues to be on the list because it hasn't been fulfilled.
Yes.
And it doesn't, right, I can see how people would think, oh, you got four of them. No, we didn't.
Yes, right, yeah, we, yes, okay, we'll, we'll figure, we'll work on that. So again, here's some more things that are for, for Parkdale, things that we have accomplished, things that we haven't. See.
You can see literacy coach is a really important piece, you know, we're really hopeful, both at the middle school and at, at Parkdale, we're really hoping to bring that on board at some point in time. The honors experience is a great example, you know, we worked on that a number of years ago, and so we were able to accomplish that in the 19, like 19, 2019, 2020 school year. And then therefore, so that it's come off the list because that program continues to move forward, and they're doing super great things. Looking forward to their presentation, hopefully, it's going to be at Knox, Mr. Brown.
What's up?
It's going to be at Knox this year?
We're hoping.
Okay, good.
We're still in the.
Okay, yeah, that was really great. So yeah, again, a STEAM coordinator too for, for middle school, and then obviously the materials and supplies go right along with that. Six assignments, we'll talk a little bit about, that's been removed because we've come up with a new way to kind of address that, and, and some of the numbers have come down, so we didn't need as many sections, so that'll be saving us some money, I'll say that in just a minute. Again, the ARC was something we, we put together at both the middle and high school, and, and we were able to accomplish that in the 2019, 20 school year. Social worker again was a priority for us, and again, she's been with us for a couple of years and doing a great job. So here the high school, you can see we, we were able to accomplish a number of years ago, all those things on the side, and that was pushing us back towards a eight-period day, restoring some of those, we didn't get, we quite, we didn't get there at that time, but it did allow us to offer more electives. So you know, we had to, during GEA, we cut back on tons of electives, and this helped us to bring some of those back.
It's a blessing.
Yeah, yeah, it sure is. Same thing for STEAM, again, our STEAM program's a little different at high school, but it just continues to expand, grow, higher needs, the, the, the equipment that we're using is much more sophisticated, so the supplies are more expensive, but again, a lot of good things happening. And then restoration, you see that in all three of them, restoration of building level materials, really hoping that this year we're going to be able to do that for the three buildings, because they've been kind of working on really, really tight budgets in terms of supplies and materials for their, for their buildings. And restoration of, of field trips is also another big ticket item for us that's going to be on the, the budget, because the PTO's have been paying for that for years now, and so what allowed them to bring that, they paid for, and I want to thank the PTO, at parts of, they paid for the author visit, because they don't have to pay for the field trips. So that's a really positive thing, and we're really hoping to do that author visit more regularly, because those are really great experiences. Mr. Pantoa, the crew over there has done a beautiful job doing like a study around the author, so they really are immersed in it, it's super valuable, it's really, really great stuff. Business teachers too, again, we're looking at because of those new programs we're talking about, the one related to the, and we're going to have a little discussion on the table, we'll actually have like a more of a presentation for you at the next board meeting, because we're meeting with the, Mr. Mark Rioli and the two tech teachers, April 1st, yep, April 1st, to talk about the program and how it's going to get up and running, and that's going to be the Blue Devil Manufacturing, which will be a complement between the business[1640.43] to be the Blue Devil Manufacturing, which will be a complement between the business department and the tech department, which is really exciting. And then the other part of that business piece is personal finance, that we would like to see as a required course, but that's down the road, we can't do that this year. So, at least, it looks like we're going to have one business teacher for this school year.
Brian, can I just mention something about that? Every week, we get something in the Area County Association of School Boards, and they have a Bill Track 50 Alert, and last week, there was one that's, requires instruction in financial management for all students in grades four through eight. That's a bill that they are trying to get approved right now. I had not heard of that.
Get ready, Mr. Brown.
Yeah. It's one of the bill alerts.
Four years of financial management, that's helpful.
So we actually have a business teacher.
You can add that to the business program.
Very well, that'd be it.
Yeah, right, so you can add that to the business program, or the facts, you know, I mean, as a.
We're actually doing part of it right now.
Yeah.
That's because we're EA strong.
Yeah, that's right. So here it is, budget, the priorities for, at the district level, and you can see some of the reserves are priorities for us, again, just making sure that those are well-funded, so, you know, sets us up for the future. Stabilize the tax cap, that continues to be a priority, and we're going to see that it's coming down, which is a really important thing for our constituents. And then here it is, looking again, looking for Director of PE, Health, PE, and Athletics. Let's see, when Mr. Leibach left, he went to a teacher on special assignment, so that condition has not been filled since then. So we're going to look at, either looking at hiring a director and replacing that person, or looking at a teacher on special assignment, depending on how things go. Assistant principal, I talked to you a little bit about the numbers at our elementary, middle school, and research we did on the other districts, and where they kind of have, and we're right in line with all of them to have an assistant principal in each of the buildings. And 1.5 FTE for school resource officer, resource officer, both. So Cat Ray is with us tonight, so we're really grateful that he's been here for about three weeks, participated in our Wellness Day, and he participated in the BABM tournament on Saturday, so how did that go?
This is coming soon.
Oh, this, oh, this, oh, I thought, oh, I thought you said. So that's exciting, so we appreciate you doing that. And as we're going to hire another half-time person that will be stationed at the middle school and work between the middle school and Parkdale. And the capital outlay project, again, we're going to continue to do that, because it's really helped us to pick up a lot of those loose ends that need to be repaired in between projects. And a good thing is, because right now it's set at $100,000, you know how expensive everything is, we've worked with Senator Galvin and the other superintendents in our area, who've really been, you know, pressing him for the last couple of years to see if they can move it forward, it looks like it's going to be at $250,000, so that'll allow us to do more work into the buildings. And then cyber insurance is something new. Again, you're probably aware of cyber attacks that have happened, a lot in industry, but now more and more in schools, and so we need cyber insurance to protect us in case something happens. This is my sound, I'll get on that right away. And so here's our budget priorities for this year, you can see, again, it ebbs and flows, depending on how the budget goes and how much money we have to spend. And so, you can see here, we're going to be replacing the six assignments with 1.0 FTEs at the middle school. So, at first we were thinking about replacing them at both the fifth and sixth grade level, but we realized because of class size, right now we only need to do it at fifth grade, so we'll have sixth, a sixth teacher, right, at fifth grade, and the classes will remain the same at sixth grade, because class size will still be manageable, but we're going to monitor it over the summer to see what happens, and so we may need to add some six assignments because of that. But one thing we do, we do have to add is some six assignments in special areas, because we're adding that additional teacher at fifth grade. So, still working on that, but again, the cost for that has come down, which is really great. Like I said, we're going to hire a 1.0 FTE in business to help us with that, not only, I don't think it's just going to be devoted to Blue Devil Manufacturing, it will also be devoted to some additional courses that they would like to offer in business. And then special ed, again, okay, we had a bunch of teachers teaching six assignments, we're going to take all those six assignments and replace them with full, two full-time teachers, one at the middle school and one at the high school. Cyber insurance, we don't know the number on that, so we're going to wait on that for a little bit, but, you know, Mr. George has a placeholder for it. We have a 0.5 FTE, like I just mentioned, it's about $35,000 to hire the 0.5 school resource officer for the middle and Parkdale. An assistant principal, as I mentioned in the previous slide, and then the director of health, PE, and athletics, again, we did put a dollar amount, because it all depends on how the interview process works out. So again, I will have probably an answer for you at the next, at the next board meeting. And then the capital outlay, we just kept it at $100,000 until we hear good. And that's related to the phone systems, some replacement of tiles and grids at the high school, along with some doors that have rotted and need to be replaced, and there's more.
Phone systems, exterior doors, ceiling tiles, and concrete.
And concrete, yes.
And Brian, if they increase it to the 250, will you have other, will that move up to 250, and then you'll have other projects to add to it?
We are doing the seeker, as if we're going to do all of that, and then in the finance committee, we're talking about easing up to the 250, not going from $100,000 to 250 in one whole school, maybe going halfway, so $100,000 to $175,000, and then the final year to the 250. And then the good thing about that is that it funds, it really becomes a funding source for itself.
So the tax levy limit calculation, I'll turn it over to you, George.
At our next finance meeting, I will have an article from On Board that we just received. We've been living under the tax levy limit calculation now for 10 years, and they had a nice article and a synopsis on it. I'd like to remind people that this is truly a calculation of formulas that gives us a figure as the maximum amount that our tax levy could be in any given year. And I'd like to remind people that it's a formula, so pieces of this formula come from different places. If you look at the first yellow highlighted, our tax-based growth factor, other districts around us would kill to have a tax-based growth factor like that. And that's indicative that new housing, new builds are happening within our boundaries. So that's one of the pieces, and that comes directly from the state. The other piece that comes directly from the state is the 1.02, that's what the state talks about often, a 2% tax levy. That's just the allowable CPI, Consumer Price Index. And if you look across, if you go over this way, you can see it, sometimes it's at 2%, sometimes it's below 2%. This year it is at 2%. Going forward, when I project both of these numbers, I use a five-year average, because I won't know those numbers, but it, it's a planning tool. What could it look like, depending on where those numbers come in? The other big piece in the calculation are capital exclusions. And in each column going this way, there are two capital exclusions, there's one on the top and one on the bottom, one gets subtracted, one gets added. So in essence, it's the difference between, between the two, from the prior year to the current year. And part of the, what we've learned, living under this calculation, in order to manage your tax cap, you need to be very cognizant of your capital exclusion costs. You really want those two numbers to be relatively the same. So if you look in the 22, 23, it would be the green number, the 1.6, and the dark blue number, the 1.5. And that ties right back to what Ms. Bowwell was talking about, that we're working on building a capital project. And part of the reason for building that capital project is because an exclusion is going to fall off, and what would happen if you don't put another one on, you're going to get this in your, in your tax rates, and in your, in your tax levy. So it's part of that management piece. And right on the bottom, I want to make sure that everyone is clear on this, just these words on the bottom, no decisions have been made yet within the finance committee, within the Board of Education, of where to set the tax levy limit for next year. It's still a work in progress, as it's been mentioned several times, April 1st is a very, very important date, because we don't really know what our state aid is going to be until that is adopted. And it all plays together when we're trying to figure this stuff out. This is just a history of actual tax rates by town and estimated rates. And as you can see, the estimated rates have been pretty close to what the actual rates come in at. Some of the actual rates actually have come in less, which ties right back to that tax-based growth factor. It spreads out on how many properties there are that are being taxed, so it actually lowers the rate. And if you look on the bottom, because the way we do taxes in New York State is very confusing, each town is assigned an equalization rate. And depending on the equalization rate, that is what tells you what your rate per thousand is. So you see in Aurora, it's $47 per thousand, but in the town of Elmo, it's over $300 per thousand. And that's a direct correlation to the equalization rate. The equalization rate in the town of Aurora is 29%, the equalization rate in the town of Elmo is 4%, and that's what causes those differences. So, I like to talk about full-value tax rate, because then it's equalized. If you apply the equalization rate to each of the 47, the 40, and the 379, everyone is paying $13.68 full value per thousand on their tax rate. Another thing I'd like to mention, the town of Aurora, people have been getting hit pretty hard with the equalization rate. Over the past three years, it has changed from over 32% down to 29%. And what that does, that means that a home, three years ago that was assessed, or let's say the value was $100,000, it has increased, the value of that home has increased. As the equalization rate drops, the value of a home increases. And it's a bit disproportionate in the town of Aurora between older homes and newer homes. Older homes are assessed lower, because their assessment doesn't change, but if you build a new home, that assessment is closer to actual true value, so they're getting hit differently than the ones who've been assessed for 50 years. So it's just something that I think is important for people to understand. And the other thing, just on the bottom, over the past three years, our full-value, equalized tax rate has actually decreased in our school district by 74 cents.
Did you have a question?
I was just going to say, and that, that inequity between what the new builds and what the older houses is playing is why so many municipalities are looking at reassessment.
Revalue, correct, that's the way to correct that.
And that's what's happening in Lockport today, and is, has been, for I think a while, talked about in the town of Aurora, but that would mean a serious tax increase for those of us living in super old houses.
Correct, certain people would see a tax increase, other people would see, I wouldn't say, well, possibly a decline, because it's going to change.
The town board's starting to talk about setting money aside to do this.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm a little confused.
Sorry, could I ask you to hold your questions, and then we can, we can catch up with everyone after, thank you. Yep, right, on slide 25. Thank you.
Again, we like to look at, you know, like, so there's a lot of money here, right? There's lots and lots of money, and we'd like to look at like kind of the value that we're getting for our dollar. So we take a look at other districts across the state, and those that are similar to us in terms of demographic, how our expenses compare to theirs. Okay. So, can you just hit the close button? Thank you, thanks, Justin, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, so you can see here, we look at gen ed, special ed, and then the total expenditure per pupil. So, you know, in East Aurora, you look at those two factors, ours is a little over $36,000, total expenditure compared to similar districts across the state, which are spending over $56,000. And then, in general, all New York State districts are at about a pair over $45,000 per pupil. So you can see, and we always think that we're getting a big bang for our buck, you know, we're spending considerably less than districts across our state, and our students are performing well, you know, we understand our performance within our community, across the state, the opportunities our kids have once they graduate. So we're always pretty pleased with what we're doing with the dollars, that's kind of goes back to, you know, spending dollars appropriately, so our, our community supports us. So expenditures, you know, we want to look at expenditures, so we'll look at where do we, where do we spend our money, and salaries obviously is always the biggest factor for us. Year-to-year change is about $1.2 million, that's related to additional positions, and also just our contractual obligations to all the employees within the district, our teachers, support staff, administrators, the whole crew. Fringe benefits go right along with that, you can see a pretty significant increase of about $1.1 million. Again, you know, we're hiring new people, they're taking benefits, especially the health, our health insurance is one of the primary factors in that, and so again, but Ms. George kind of takes this all into account as we're building the budget and looking three years down the road in terms of that sustainability, and what can we continue to manage, what can we continue to keep into the, into the budget without creating significant impact on our taxpayers. Supplies, again, we talked a little bit about supplies, increasing our supply budgets for primarily our buildings, because they've been cut for years, and we really need to replenish those. Contractual obligations, again, this kind of goes hand-in-hand with BOSEs, you can see a big red number down there of $550,000 savings in BOSEs, but then that, we look for other resources for those contracts, and so there's a little bit of offset there, but you can see the net of that is, you know, there's great savings of $550,000 in BOSEs. Again, thank you to Mrs. Marinaccio, which is primarily related to those programs with special needs, bringing some of that inside, it's really saving us some money, but it's also doing some really great things for our kids. But there's also things related to technology that are part of that as well. So you can see, those are kind of where our expenditures are projected for, for next year. And then we look at the revenues, okay, where do we get our money to pay for this? Property tax levy, again, we're assuming 3.08, because that's the cap, but we haven't made a decision about that, we'll have a discussion about that now, and then we'll have a much firmer number for you the next time we get together, because we'll also know that it's coming from the states, and that'll be helpful too. Our pilots are ending, so that's going off the books. Let's just see here, state aid, without building aid, it's the 953, which is a nice shot in the arm, again, that's primarily related to foundation aid, so we're really pleased with that. City for buildings, it's down a little bit, and that goes directly related to our expenditures for our facilities. And then tax, sales tax, again, you know, we've been right around that $2 million mark for, gosh, a bunch of years, but the sales tax is coming in strong, so initial $200,000 there. Miscellaneous revenues have dropped off a bit, about $144,000, and that's related to...
It's related to our prior year BOSEs refund, and billbacks to other districts, and it's all related to the pandemic. Eventually, that'll stabilize again.
Yeah, so we're just using less of those services, so therefore, the revenue is lower. And then the appropriated fund balance, again, we're not, we may have to adjust it in the end, we'll see how that goes when we have a finalized budget for you, but right now we're just keeping it at 418.
And the appropriated fund balance is to help manage the taxes, is giving the leftover money from one year to the next year to help manage the taxes.
Well, so to recap the budget, the current budget is $39,489,97. The tentative increase is $1,984,798 for a new budget of $41,473,895. It represents about a 5.03% increase budget to budget, and we're looking at a budget gap right now of just over $277,000. So when we look at this, right now we still have a gap of about $277,000, but we're really hopeful, like I said, over the next week or two, actually, by April 1st, we'll get some information that will help us to close that gap for our next presentation. And so here we are, you know, we've worked through this process, and, you know, I think our first, our first budget presentation is the December 15th, that's usually when we start with the actual formal, and then we work through the process over the next several months, and, you know, the information comes slowly in the beginning, in January, February, but now we're getting more and more information that really helps us tighten things up. And then we just go through the process, you know, we're going to have another budget workshop on the 6th, hopefully we'll be able to settle on the levy and have a balanced budget and be able to move forward, because on the 21st, we'll adopt the school district budget and proper property tax report card, and then we go through the submittals, and then we prepare for the budget vote, which is the second Tuesday of the month, May 17. And so, and that's the same budget vote every school district in New York State now, which is kind of a feature. So now we're just having questions.
Fourth member, question?
On slide 24. I just hope that when you make your presentations, you're making a point to the public that that percent of increase is not only stabilizing, it's reducing.
Mr. Ruff, do you have plans to do community presentations this year?
Well, we haven't, because of circumstance, so we really, I don't know what it is, I usually do go and present, like to Aquanis and the other groups, I'll probably fit that in between now, for sure, yeah.
I'll, I'll take slide 23 for 800. Just so that I understand this, this is, what we're seeing listed on here is drawn from the long-term pri, the long-range priorities, but it's not inclusive of all of those, it's ones that have been identified to put in there, and then the, the strike-throughs are ones that have since been removed. This was the initial list for this year, and, and as you proceeded on, those have been removed.
Right, so, yeah, so that's a great question. So when we first started putting this together, months ago, with the administrators, and they're talking with your teachers, trying to figure out what, like, you know, especially like at high school, they're working on their course catalog, what courses are we going to offer, these new programs that we're interested in doing, how feasible are they, you know, and all that kind of stuff. So you can see that we wanted to put in the STEAM position at Parkdale, same thing at the middle school, we didn't need those, so, again, as he's working through his schedule, and Mr. Roberts and Mr. Brown are working that out, they share teachers, and so Mr. Roberts happens to have a point to ELA and Science that he can give up, so they can just travel down, or we work that out between, between, between them. So they, they work all that out, and so we didn't need to alter that for editing, edit as a sixth assignment. But we did want to say that the six assignments will be replaced by 1.0 FTE, and that's staying in the budget at fifth grade, yeah. And so then we go through it, so we had another tech position for the high school, we had, we had two positions for business at the high school, and also that all those special ed were related to creating, for our pre-K program, integrated. And also, all those special ed were related to creating, for our pre-K program, integrated special ed supports. Now, all those kids get special ed support through the county because that's where it's funded. So we thought we could try to make that happen and get the funding sent to us, because the county would pay for it. But the process is incredibly complicated, 60 pages of applications, and so it's just not feasible for this year. So they'll still get their special ed services, they're going to be provided, they'll just get them through the county, yeah, as opposed to directly through us, or we'll be integrated in the classroom. But we're headed there, so that's good.
Thank you.
Progress, Mr. Rusk, you, so when we find out what the actual numbers are from the state, and if it does not close the gap, you go back to the.
Right, exactly. So say we can't close the gap, where I'm going to get the money from is this. We'll have to pull back on programming until we come.
And right now, the gap is larger than this list.
Yes, pretty much so, yeah.
There are other places that I'm looking, like we're finalizing a bunch of BOSEs things tomorrow, I think we're needed, a bunch of the software. So there's still adjustments that need to be made in areas.
So the presentation for the next board meeting, you'll fill the board in on either outcome, what makes the cut, what doesn't make the cut, even if it wasn't on the slide.
Right, exactly. So this will all come back. And even like when we look at those special ed positions for pre-K, and we have dollar amounts, those dollar amounts would technically be reimbursed by the county, but we just don't know to what degree. So we may not get all of it back, because they work on a different system, but it would be some portion of that, that we just put those numbers in as place. And that's exactly what will happen. So the next board meeting, we'll have a balanced budget, and so we'll have all the information. As long as they pass the budget at the state, that's the most important. They do that, we will have a balanced budget right down to zero. And then I'll say how it impacted this or how it didn't, yeah, depending on those numbers.
Brian, do we have any vault, our, the cyber insurance, do we have any idea what range that is? I'm just.
Go ahead.
So my previous three years in Pembroke, we have been purchasing it, and we got dropped every year after the first year because of increased expectations and standards. So we are not at the level yet with our service carry, we're making great strides very quickly so that we can apply and be accepted. Right now, unless the school can capitalize, say, every single user, every user is using multi-factor authentication. As soon as we press no on that first line, our applications are deleted. So we're working on it. Year one in Pembroke was at the $4,000 range for $5 million in coverage. Year two, it doubled. Year three, it doubled. So still working on $5 million basic expectation. The increase in cost is going higher and higher. This year, I can't even speak to it yet. We want to get compliance, so we comply, because right now, we're not going to.
And then did I see something about the Maya learning that we were changing to something different when I was looking in the budget book? Did I see that? Okay.
Maya learning.
Maybe it was just a shift from what it was to, it was the shift to Maya learning. Okay, I was going through the numbers, that followed up to Ms. Redd, I just wanted to make sure that was still.
Add to it, though, maybe. We are looking at training program.
Okay. Thank you.
So Brian, right now, we have a gap of 277,397 at the tax cap of 3.8%.
3.08.
3.08, yes, I'm sorry, 3.08. So does that mean there's no conversation, no talk whatsoever about even lowering it below the 3.08?
No.
No, the conversation in the finance committee, we've been talking about it, but no decisions have been made.
Okay. But if we do that, then the gap is going to be bigger. Right, larger.
Passion waiting.
We could appropriate, we could appropriate more to the appropriated fund balance. We have to see what happens with state aid. We have to see what happens when BOSEs shakes out. There's still a lot of unknowns.
That's why you're keeping it at the 3.08.
For now.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Joel.
Look forward to more information in two weeks. Less than two weeks, we're back on Wednesday.
Trust me. Sorry, for two weeks, two weeks, Ms. Rusk, two weeks.
Look back there, it's a two-minute screening. Drop, she fired up.
The stakes don't match. Maybe not in the budget.
Not in the budget.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 10, is there any legislation to come forward? Item 11, consensus items, may I have a motion to approve the consensus item? Moved by Mrs. Malice, seconded by Mrs. Daniel, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're not holding.
You just said that we can have a question.
Oh, at the end of the meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you for holding.
Yes.
Thank you all for following the process. There are only a handful of you, but we need to stick with the plan. Thank you. We are moving on to item 12, items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Austin Dodge to the position of 1.0 FTE, probationary technology STEAM teacher within the tenure area of technology as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion?
I'll just say, Mr. Dodge has been with us for about, maybe seven months, and, yeah, there you go. And he's done a really great job. And so, and I just want to say thank you to him. During our wellness day, Orsha Park wanted to come and see what we were doing with our STEAM programs, and he toured them through and showed them all the nuts and bolts, and they were quite impressed. So I'm grateful for him for doing that.
All the nuts and bolts, I love them.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve for a second reading a revision to Board Policy 5676, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Seconded by Mrs. O'Wiler. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the 2022, 2023 school year calendar as detailed in your attachment. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Seconded by Mrs. O'Wiler. Discussion?
I think you should put that day after Easter back in.
Did you hear that, Bridgette? Do you find any spare days?
You can always provide.
You said it was still flexible.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the ELA textbooks and supplementary materials as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved enthusiastically by Mrs. Malice.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Wiler and Mrs. Daniel. Must be the call. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing notice of the May 17, 2022 Annual School District Meeting Budget Vote and Election as detailed in your agenda?
So moved.
Sorry, was that Mrs. O'Wiler? That's Mr. Cassidy? Was that in tandem?
I think it was.
I didn't say anything.
Mrs. O'Wiler, moved by Mrs. O'Wiler. Mrs. Daniel. Holy cow, discussion, I think that covers the discussion, folks. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0. We cannot even claim late hour here. That was it. Items of information, the next regularly scheduled board meeting should be back in the middle school library, yes, on Wednesday, April 6. And you all know, we have a meeting for our evaluation on the 22nd. Is there any other information to come before the board? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cassidy.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions carried 6-0. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Two minutes to spare.